I don't think we can hear.
France, good to see you.
Alright.
Hi, John.
So it's seven oh one, and we will continue the public hearing for the application of William Genevieve's property located at five one seven Route six. The applicant is seeking a special permit for restoration of gravel pit, in accordance with section sixteen of the zoning regulations. So do we have somebody here tonight who is representing the applicant?
Yeah, William Genevieve. William Genevieve.
Please.
Honorable. Mary John. Jim.
I hear you, I just didn't catch what your name was.
William Genevieve, the Honorable.
Oh, okay, there's got a different name showing up on the screen.
Yeah, it's going to Manny Viveros.
Yeah, that's my comment, that's, I'm new to this computer.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, for the record, Mark France, before we start, I just want to introduce Trent Kason, who was shown on screen, zooming into this. Trent has just joined our firm. We get the bar exam results on October fourth or fifth, but we are confident that he has passed the bar. So he gets to go to all the zoning commission meetings with me across the state, sort of, to find out what these things are like.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you.
You might have to turn your volume down just a little bit, we were getting some pretty good feedback here, but if you can tell us about the application you have.
That's true, I have, I did decide the hill, Jim, where it was plain grass and saw straw mesh, right now it's all that grass on straw mesh. The slope on the side where it goes down the driveway, it's already been done. Completed as of today. With loom. Hear me?
Um, it's very difficult, having a difficult time understanding all.
What slope that we, that I had job of the property that time, the slope that slopes down, has straw mesh on it, and grass, and loom.
Okay, Bill, this is Jim Halas, are you talking about the slope along the hall run?
Yes. That makes it all stable there.
So. I guess, is there anything else you would like to say about the application that you have pending at this point?
No.
Okay. Agent Halasy, uh.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yes.
Good, hi, it's Leanne, I couldn't make out much of anything that Mr. Genevieve said, could you ask him to repeat it, or? I don't know what else to do.
Can you hear me okay?
Um, yep, you're a little faint, but you're clear.
Okay, yeah, long distance call, I'm a long way from the owl. But, well, Jim, I think you've got the gist of what he would say.
Yes, what, and Miss Bill, if I'm, uh, I.
I never got any comments on the plan that I sent you there. About putting the grass on the side of the, the, some smoke there, grass in it.
That's because we.
Done.
Were required to address that in a public hearing.
What's that?
We were required to address your application in a public hearing, we were not allowed to discuss it before we held a public hearing.
I'm here, I, I, I'm addressing.
Okay. Um. Anyway. If I say something inaccurate, Bill, correct me, please. Leanne, what Mr. Genevieve was sharing was that he had put topsoil along the slope that runs along the hallway, and used a mesh material, um.
And grass, and loom. And I got a high point on the top edge, and the water's gonna go over the top of it.
You're saying.
Very top of it, I got a lip on there, like a high point.
A berm, okay, a berm along, again, a berm along the, uh, the hallway.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
The water be directed towards my property. Will not leave the property.
Understand. Okay, Jim, did you have any other comments on the application?
Well, I mean, there's. The application before the commission is basically the, the, the plan, the, um, reclamation plan. And what it shows is limited topsoil along the southern border, calling it south, might be southeast border of the property, Hutchinson property, along that side. Um, but not in the bulk of the area that was disturbed.
No, no, there's no topsoil here, put there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Genevieve, what, what did you say again?
Just on, on the, the, the slope is the, uh, that the loom on, not toward the center of the property.
I mean, ju- just for the. Is it fair to say that the topsoil that was spread out has been buried during the course of the process? Topsoil that was, was set us up.
No, I put new topsoil there.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about the top, the recent topsoil, but, but in general, the, the topsoil that, that was earmarked for the site, for the entire site, was, was mixed.
Only one inch, yeah, we went over that one.
Okay.
It got buried, it got disappeared in the, in the.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, uh, just, it's been a while.
Wasn't enough, then, do what, there was. Probably about two thirds of that was, uh, sand when I started, but it wasn't that much loom there. I said at the beginning that I'd spread the loom that was there, which I did, and it got lost. But only inch there, the front half of the property when I first started. The back half was all sand, sand and gravel.
So, Mr. Genevieve, are you aware that there's a requirement that you, you know, according to your original plan, spread four inches of topsoil over.
But there's four inches there.
Mr. Genevieve, do not interrupt the chairman, it's difficult in a digital meeting, and it's rude.
I know that, sir.
The chairman is finished, you may speak.
Go ahead.
So were you aware of the requirement, the topsoil being spread over the entire site that was disturbed?
I was aware of that, yes, at the beginning, but there was not enough topsoil, I just said that. There's only an inch of topsoil, half the property, half topsoil on.
Okay, but the plan that you submitted to the commission was approved, and is currently approved plan requires four inches of topsoil over the entire disturbed site. Our regulation requires at least two inches of topsoil spread over the entire excavated area. And so I don't see how the application that you submitted complies with our regulation.
There was no four inches there to, uh, do it. Hold on a second. Okay, the original plan was half the water going to Hutchinson, and half the water going to me, all the water's going to my property right now. There's nothing going over on our property.
I understand that.
I was there in the plan. Then I changed it, and I submitted this plan to the Hill, which I did. Straw mesh, it's got loom on it, and grass. Which is no way it's gonna, it's gonna have any movement at all. Any movement's gonna be, it's gonna be in the center of the property, my property.
I understand that, that those are not levying your plan for restoration complying with the zoning regulations, which require a minimum of two inches, in the case of your previously approved plan, it was four inches of the entire site.
But I had your cha- plan changed twice. And I submitted this one last time. Now, you have to change.
The commission cannot authorize any plan that is not in compliance with the regulations.
Say that again, sir, I didn't catch that.
The commission is not allowed to authorize any restoration plan that is in violation of the regulations.
Yeah, I'm asking you not, I don't want to put the topsoil on my property.
I know you don't need to, but the regulations are stricter than you do.
What's that, sir? I didn't hear that one. I was talking, you started talking. Go ahead.
Regulations require that you put topsoil over the entire disturbed area to facilitate growth.
It's growth there right now. I don't wanna, I wa- I don't wanna put topsoil, because I don't just kill it off when I put something there.
Okay.
That's making my, 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 part of my property all mud, please.
I understand.
You understand, well, why would I want to put, make mud in my property? When I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something there, the pressure building. Because I got, I got, it's a, it's a belly right there. No water leaves my property, and it does leave my property, it's gonna go to my other property. It does not go towards Hutchinson property. It's bellowed, it's bellowed, if you looked at the second plan, you had to do it then. You wanted a bellow, it's pond in the middle. There's gonna be no movement. So I don't, I, I don't foresee me putting topsoil down to, to, for grass, that, that it's not gonna mean anything.
Well, we, we've been, we've been, we've been many years, nobody's gone into development, I don't know how many more years it's gonna be before it gets developed, and we need to stabilize the property.
The, the property is stabilized. But where's the top, where, where's my dirt going, where's my dirt going? Where's my sand gonna go? Not to my property, stay in there. In the, in the middle of it. The way you had me graded, it's not going anywhere. So I don't foresee putting grass on top of something that's not moving.
Bill.
Right now, it's not, it's about, up neck height.
Okay, well, I understand Mr. Genevieve's position. It's been contrary to his approved plan all along. And I don't think we need to have any more discussion on that.
Well, you approved the first one, then you made me regrade it, I lost half my, my loom regraded. But it satisfy you to, to, to have everything go in the center of it? Now it's all in the center, I don't want to put no dirt in there, or loom in there, that's all, it's, it's, you're on the right side. As far as I'm concerned, it's not gonna move. I mean, common sense, if you go out and look at the lot, and I got four or five silt fences alongside that fill, so where's it gonna go? Tell me where it's gonna go.
Could I, could I ask you a question, uh, this, this is, for the record, this is Mark France, uh, the commission's captain. Do you have a certification from a Connecticut registered professional engineer that the site is, is stable in its current or proposed condition, and that there'll be no windborne or waterborne erosion on the site?
I have an engineer that did that.
Mr. Halasy, have you received such a certification from the applicant's engineer? As Mr. Bell indicated by, in writing, that this site, that there will be no er- that, a- a- as, as proposed in this plan, this before the commission, that there will be no windborne or waterborne erosion?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't recall, no. The ASBIL was studied by, it's not done by Chris Bell, but another, a, a surveyor, at that point, Mr. Bell was incapacitated. And we had, um, a friend or a cohort of his, who'd be ASBIL.
So we've received no certification that there is two inches of loom, or that, or that the site is otherwise, uh, s- stable for both windborne and waterborne erosion, correct?
Correct.
Then our regulation requires that the area be maintained until the area is stabilized and approved by the commission. And the intent there is you have grass to hold the dirt, to keep it from blowing away, or eroding away due to water, which we saw happen. There were a bunch of people that told me you would never get grass to grow without putting the topsoil down, I was a little bit skeptic. I'm a believer now, I saw that the grass did not grow. And, uh, so I believe our regulations are frankly required.
Where's it not stable at, that's all I wanna know. You're asking me if it's stable or not, you're saying it's not stable, where's it not stable at? That's what I wanna know, after the grass is grown, after what I put up there, that land's stable, grass is not, the dirt's not going anywhere.
That, for the record, again, Mark France, that's your statement, I, I haven't seen anything from an engineer certified.
The grass grows, I gotta wait for the grass to grow this week. I just put it down this weekend, if you understood what I said, I just put the stuff down, the grass don't grow overnight.
So if you just put it, put the grass, if you just put the loam and grass down, then, uh, how does that, how does what you did this week relate to the plan that's pending before the commission now?
Well, I was out there with Jim, he says that on the, on the hill, it's a little, it's fire. And I said, well, I'll put the grass on the hill, I'm grassing and everything, and it will be stable. And then it's not gonna move, there's nothing else he said about the middle of it, anything, the other side of it, about movement, but it's not gonna move. He had, he had concerns about the hill. And what, that's what I grassed, with the hill. Once it grows, my engineer is more than happy to sign off on it, it's not gonna, it's got no movement on it. With the plan that I, that, uh, I submitted there. Of May of this year, and here we are in September. I had no, no, nobody answered me on this thing. Grass all along the slope now.
There's gra- Mr. Halasy, you were out there, there's grass growing now along the slope?
No. I've been out there the last, since it happened, this last few days.
Well, I mean, was there grass growing a few days ago? On this slope?
I didn't look at it a few days. I, I, I have to assume there wasn't, because there was no, this was prior to the topsoil, the topsoil went in over the last four or five days, I believe.
So the loam went in the last four or five days?
Yeah.
In your experience, does grass grow in four or five days?
No.
So it's probable that there's no grass growing there now, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and just for the record, I, I had never indicated. It, it's, 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 the inner part of the, the site was, was not a concern.
Excuse me, sir. See, I talked to Jim, I, I called Jim earlier today, didn't answer his phone. I called him and explained that I grassed it, that I finished up grassing it today. So I don't, I don't believe Jim's seen yet. But it's grass, it's got straw mesh all the way down the slope. I gotta wait for the rain, get a little wet, probably a week or two, it'll turn green. It's not gonna turn green overnight.
Bill, I think the larger issue is, is the main part of the site that was disturbed, it has no topsoil on the surface. That remains to be, it's still, that's a, that's not in conformance with the zoning regulations, is what, what, um, is sort of the crux here. My opinion.
So I think we're, we're kind of in a, uh, disagreement that's acknowledged. Uh, we're, the regulations require topsoil, that Mr. Genevieve does not want to put topsoil down. That's, uh, in, is seen all along, in spite of the fact that his restoration plan required four inches of topsoil over all disturbed surfaces. Do any of the commission members have any other questions at this point? Is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, this is Catherine Hutchinson. I'm the adjoining landowner to the southeast, or putting it in perspective from Route six along the right hand of the subject property, as you're standing on Route six and looking toward the river. I also want to address, uh, the representation was made that the way the property is graded now grades toward the middle and no water would be running. The ASBIL that was done previously by the engineer clearly showed, which was done after the grading was done, clearly shows the high point nowhere near the edge of the access road. The plan that he filed with this application does show a proposed new high point which apparently runs along the top of the slope adjoining the access road. It's not clear whether it goes all the way to Route six, but it's supposed to run from Route six back to the back of the property. There has been no grading done. So that I'm raising the question as to whether or not at this point or whether or not it's something the applicant proposes to do was to regrade, so at least it conforms to the plan that he filed with this application. In other words, the ASBIL reflects the high point toward his property, or roughly towards the west. And it, uh, they proposed, according to his, uh, map thirty five with this application, to repeat myself, the new prop- proposed high runs along, basically along the slope adjoining the access road. So the property at this point is not graded so that the property, so that the water runs toward the middle of his property. And you have to compare that with a ASBIL, you'll see what I'm referring to.
I did note, uh, yesterday and today, as I drove by, there were, there was some activity out there that looked like it was grading in that vicinity. Um, what was actually done, I can't tell, I just know that there was grading in progress, so I can defer the fact that there was some grading going on in that area over the last two days. And I, I would also like to address Mr. Genevieve's comment that he got no feedback on the application. We had intended to discuss this application at a public hearing we set up in July, and postponed it for a month at your request. So that is why we did not get around to discussing the application. We continued, we, we opened the public hearing in our August meeting, and there was nobody here to discuss the application. So we continued the public hearing until tonight, and this is the first opportunity we have had to, had in the public environment, in a public hearing, to discuss your application.
I sent the application in May, I got no feedback on it. About the high point, uh, of, of putting the grass on, on the hill. I never got a, no, no answer from nobody. But it does, it has a berm right at the high point, and it goes down into my property.
Mr. Genevieve, for the record, Mark France.
Stop for that.
You, you don't get feedback because it's a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is for you or your engineer to present the application, to explain it, and to explain how it complies with the zoning regulations, and, and with the restoration requirements and so on. Then you get feedback. You don't get feedback until the commission has heard your application. What's happening now is, no one is here in person to walk us through the plans, can, perhaps can you do a share screen and put up the plans and, and walk the commission through what you're proposing?
I don't have that ability right now, sir.
Okay, so you, that's not something you're able to do right now? I, I, I understand.
You have it, you had it, had it in the mid. I had it back from you people. So I put it on myself to fix the hill, so it wouldn't erode, that's why I put grass there, that's why the grass is there now. And there's a lip on the top of it, that's worth, drains towards my property. It's not gonna go toward anybody else's property. Plus, I got three silt fences along that property.
Okay.
And I got a hundred and fifty foot buffer before it even hits out of the property, from where the sand is.
I don't think you're giving us any new information at this point, Mr. Genevieve, so I'm gonna move on.
Well, I'm asking for a waiver about the four inch of loom.
I'm not.
You're asking, I'm asking. And I don't want a loom in it. I wanna wait.
Are you, and Mr. Genevieve, are you proposing two inches of loom on the entire site?
No, I don't want no loom on it.
No loom on the entire site is your proposal?
No, just on the hill, where, where, where the road.
So the, the rest of the, the rest of the site, you're proposing no loom, is that correct?
Pretty much, it's weeds right now.
Okay, I just want, just to be fair to you, that means that you're proposing something that violates the letter of the zoning regulations, and this commission legally can't grant that request. Only the zoning board of appeals grants variances, this commission can't do that. So they, they could waive from four inches to two inches if they wished, but they cannot waive, waive the two inches on the site, and you've just testified that you don't have two inches on the entire site, and you don't intend to do it. Correct?
I don't intend to do it, because why should I make my site money, make, make mud on it, that's why I'm asking for a waiver.
No, as a matter of fact.
Why would I put loom on there, why don't you straighten it off, put a dome on it?
You put loom on, and then you seed it, and then it's not mud. Right?
On.
Do any of the commission members think there is a need to extend the public hearing beyond tonight? Or is this information that anybody is gonna want that we don't have?
I'll, I'll call the zoning board of appeals. Apply it for it.
Okay, hearing, nobody that wants to continue the public hearing. The public hearing on the property on five one seven Route six is closed.
And our fellow members of the public, were the other members in public?
If you did, provide the.
Okay, I, I heard Ms. Hutchinson speak, I didn't know if anyone else, any other members of the public wanted to speak.
Are there any other members of the public that wanted to speak on, on this? Okay, public hearing is closed, seven twenty nine.
I want to speak on a different topic, if that's okay?
Yes.
Knock it out. Hi.
Yeah.
Knock it out, knock it out.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Okay. So next up is the public hearing for the application of the Vale Soccer Club, property in the town of Mandover, Riverside Drive and Long Hill Road. Applicants seeking special permit for lighting at downtown recreation fields.
Okay, for the record, my name is Eric Anderson, and the town administrator. I'm here on behalf of the town. Also on the call is Zach Eddinger, Eddinger was representing Vale East Soccer. So, and who submitted the application, the reason I'm involved is because this is occurring on town property, therefore I signed for the applicant.
So do you wanna walk us through the application, or Zach, you're gonna do that?
That's up to you guys, you tell us how you'd like us to handle it.
Zach, why don't you start off, and then I'll jump in where appropriate?
Okay. Um, so, I believe everybody has the document that we put together, um, with support of the town on what we're attempting to do. the town on what we're attempting to do. In the past, we have had lights on this site that are temporary lights. And so inside of the zoning code for temporary lights, there are certain things that are really hard for us to gather, including, you know, the, the candle area that they service based upon the location of the light and/or where they're facing. But if, as you can see, we showed a photo of what the, the lights have looked in the past. And then we have a little diagram towards the end of the document that shows what we're hoping to do for the upcoming season. So that, that's the gist of what we're trying to do.
Okay, and so just to be clear, the applicant owns one, currently own one set of portable lighting that are twenty-three feet high that are composed of four halogen bulbs. That is the one pictured on the first page. They're aimable and movable. You can say they have a rear reflective cone, but they don't have any additional shielding. What the applicant is proposing to rent and given to the commission earlier were cut sheets for those applicant or those applications were twenty-three foot tall light towers that utilize four LED lights each that are roughly two hundred and thirty watt bulbs. So I did reach out to the manufacturer and attempt to get cut sheets and an ISO diagram for the lighting. They were not able to provide me with anything, frankly. So what I provided you was a similar set of specifications for a Generac set of portable lights, which also use four LED lights mounted at the same height as the, the ones that the applicant is proposing ordering and which have a higher intensity, higher total number of lumens and higher total number of watts than the ones that the applicant is using. So that is the information we've been able to provide. And if you look, there is a ISO diagram of the light output for a light that is, that is aiming five degrees above horizontal for the rounded can, which is almost identical to what is on the existing single light. And then on the last, or on page three, you have the ISO diagrams for the equivalent of what they're planning on putting on. And then on the last page, superimposed on the field diagram is the location and the basic aiming of the lights that the applicant would like to use. So that in a nutshell is the information that we have.
Okay, Agent Allison, your comments on the application?
Yes, thank you. Well, it, it does not appear that there are the lights proposed are night sky compatible. And I understand why. I did have fairly extensive conversation with Jeremy Wilson, who was involved with, with Vale Soccer. But nonetheless, the regulation calls for night sky compliance and this application did not meet that requirement. Also the lumens, a little confused about, but my understanding is we have a cut sheet from another manufacturer, a different manufacturer. It's not clear to me that, how I would apply that to this, my understanding they're, they're more substantial, they're, they're higher or brighter and therefore I think the logic was that these, the lights that are proposed would have less impact, but I, but I don't know that for fact, actually. That's all I have.
Okay, any comments from anybody on the commission?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, the one, that's current one that we have the picture of, how tall is that tower and how tall are the proposed towers?
They're basically the same height, those towers are all around between twenty-two and twenty-three feet tall.
Okay. So the, the difference is the type of a bulb that's going to be used?
Correct.
And then you have more, this was just, they only have one right now?
No, that, so that is one single unit that has four bulbs that are all independently aimable. The new units that they're proposing to rent also have four independently aimable bulbs.
We're doing six of them?
So I don't think so, one, two, three, four, five, there's six shown on here. But that is because two are existing town lights that are field security lights that are there anyway. So what he's proposing is to bring on three additional units and use the one temporary that he already owns.
The town owned lights, the yellow, the yellow versus the orange?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Ted, could I suggest that we read the regulations before we do anything?
Certainly. And, and happy to do that, I
because I read them and I, I see none, none of the information that's supposed to be available to us on the application.
I agree with that comment, rather than read all the regulations, I would kind of like to focus on those things that I was looking for and didn't find. And so, you know, in section four point two one of our regulations, lighting regulations in all zoning districts, it talks about all exterior spotlighting plus lighting shall be so shielded that the light source cannot be seen from adjacent properties and no lighting shall constitute a hazard to drivers at night on public streets. Next line down, outdoor lighting shall be dark sky compatible. Full cutoff type fixtures defined as luminaires or a light fixture that by design of the housing does not allow any light dispersion or direct layer to shine above ninety degree horizontal lane, lane from the base of the light fixture. Lighting at the property line shall not exceed point two lumens per square feet. So that was, those were the three things that I was looking for for section four point two one. On section twenty-three point five B one lighting regulations requiring site plan or special permit under twenty-three point five B point one, point two, submission of lighting plan applicants proposing installation of outdoor lighting shall file with the commission a lighting plan subject to the site plan review. Said plan shall be designed in accordance with lighting standards and requirements and shall contain the following. Location, height, type of outdoor lighting poles and luminaries, including building mounted luminaries. The luminaries manufacturer specification data, including lumen output and photometric data showing cutoff angles. The wattage and type of lamp, i.e. LED, compact fluorescent, high pressure sodium, et cetera. An ISO diagram or photometric plan showing the intensity of the illumination expressed in lumens per square foot at ground level, including at property lines. Hours of business operation when lighting will be turned off or reduced to security levels and by what means, automatic time of solar switches, et cetera. The lighting supports and fixtures are not within fifty feet of a property line of a property that either contains residential users within a residential district. And then I went down to the part that we recently modified, twenty-three point five B point three modifications. Modifications to this section for public outdoor recreation facility may be permitted by the commission by special permit. A lighting study should be required to determine the maximum recommended lighting fixture height and maximum lumens per square foot based on the type and intensity of the sport produced and the size of the area illuminated. Maximum lumens per square foot will not exceed the value specified in the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America publication R P six dash fifteen Sports and Recreation Area Lighting for U S Pickle Gold Guidelines. So those, and I know that's asking a lot for the temporary lighting system. But I think it's important at this point that we go back to why we're here today. And as I recall, this became issue last October because we had the lights at the soccer field shining directly across into the neighbor's house and the neighbor complained about that. We ended up not pursuing the matter because we came, we had the soccer season. But we've had essentially a year to address this issue and figure out how to do it properly. Because I think, you know, I certainly have no opposition to lighting the field, you know, I looked up online, Vale's a great sports club. I know they do a good job of what they do. But we kind of in last December and in January, we actually revised the lighting regs. And I was hoping at that time that there would have been a representative from Vale's, Vale's sport club that, you know, participated in some of those discussions. So that, you know, that would have been the ideal opportunity to fix the regulations and, and see what we could do to make it possible. So that's, those were the regulations that, that I was looking for, Scott, the information spelled out that, that I did not see. Any other questions from any other commission members?
Can I ask a quick question or is it not yet the, our, our time?
Oh, go, go right ahead.
Thank you. So the regulations that you just read off, are they specific to permanent lights versus temporary lights? Are they for all lights? And I, I'm sorry that I don't know that answer ahead of time.
I think it's for all lights, we certainly have no, no specific regulations for temporary lights or permanent lights. We just have, you know, the purpose of these regulations is to provide specific outdoor lighting standards in order to avoid upward illumination, reduce glare and avoid light thrust, trespass on adjacent properties in public streets. So when I look at the intent, it would apply both the temporary and permanent heading.
And again, excuse my naivety, but when there are streetlights for street work by the state or the town, do they apply for a permit with you guys before using those?
For the town, yes. The state, I can't swear to how that works, I, I don't know if this is, to any branch.
For the record, Mark Rans, the state is, is exempt from local zone. So they don't, they don't have to comply with local zone. The town, the town does, private clubs do, developers do, et cetera.
So do you guys have any past applications from the town that we could review and see what we're missing from ours?
We do. When, when we put up the lighting for the new community senior center, they have a lighting plan.
But was that terminate or was that temporary?
That was permanent.
Right, I'm saying from, from a temporary perspective.
No, we had no, we had no other applications for temporary lighting.
Okay, so when the town, when there are lights that are being used for construction work, right? Road lights for the city, the town and things like that, they don't need to apply and, and have the, the specific details for you guys?
I don't really answer that question.
Okay, and, and again, I'm not trying to be tough, I'm just trying to see how we can compare what we're trying to accomplish on a town property with a lease in place versus what has been potentially done in the past. And, and obviously I, I appreciate your comments about the, the winter of last year and, and we did miss that. So I apologize about that. But in, potentially what we are looking for is if we can do the two months that we require based upon our lease that's in place and then maybe revisit it together for a longer term solve. So I don't know if that's something that we can potentially talk about together as a group.
So I went out and looked at the light fixture that you have out there now. And if, you know, and that's the one that Eric provided the photo of, it's a little difficult to see at a distance. But I do think you might be able to make something like that work. I know the lights on the bottom half of the pole because of the mount, you can rotate those down a full, you know, they can be flat out to parallel to the ground with no tilt on them at all. So you can make those dark sky compliant. I don't know that they would have to be all the way down to be dark sky compliant. You can have a little bit of tilt because you've got the cone on there that shields it. And so you can slant those out towards the end and have no light come above the rise and as long as that the top edge of your cone is at ninety degrees or below, so that gives you a lot of latitude. The upper lamps are a little bit harder because that U mount prevents the lamp from rotating down as far as you would need to rotate it to make it dark sky compliant. That's, that's just a straight piece of metal that goes around. I don't know if you could get from the person that you read them from permission to bend it so that it can make it to where you can shine the light down or make your own, you know, for the upper lamps, they go there. But, but there are other things that you could do with this, this light that I think make them dark sky compliant. That's, that's just my guess, I'm certainly not a lighting engineer in, in the, the thing talks about that.
Can I ask another question then? I'm sorry, based upon your comment? Is that okay, sir? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I understand, based upon the darks, is the dark sky compliance your biggest concern based upon the regulations? Or is it the, the, the neighbor or like, how do we work together and it is, so that I guess that's the question, is, is the dark sky compliance your biggest concern?
I, I think, you know, I, and I'm only one member, we've got, you know, five different commission members, I don't we haven't discussed this yet because that's what the public hearing is for. My first thought is, I think they're both important. Because, you know, dark sky compliance is getting to be a big deal. And the neighbor who had the lights shining directly across the field into their window, I thought had a valid concern. So I, I kind of got both of those. And I would also, you know, I wanted to point out that, that in here where we talked about this this Illuminating Engineering Society for North American Sports and Recreation Area Lighting, it has a couple of different examples in there that show shields that you can make to put over light so that they can become dark sky compliant. So I think you can do it. It might take a little bit of ingenuity. But if you want the lights, that would, I think, I think it's possible without an awful lot of difficulty to comply with our regulations. Any other questions?
If they, if they, so if they rolled this fixture over, they would have to, they still would have to be shielded. If they, they rolled that whole thing over ninety degrees, they'd still have to have shielding.
Are you saying that because the back of the cone is open? Then, yeah, I didn't look at it from that perspective. But again, you know, the, that sports and recreational area lighting guideline shows a bunch of different, you know, you could put a box over it or they had different kinds of shields.
Can I ask, can I ask another favor? I'm sorry. Can I just ask that we identify ourselves so that I know who's talking about that? Is that something that normally happens in the town meeting?
We can do that. I'm Ted Larson, the chairman.
We're usually on Zoom.
Yep. So I will ask that the, the people, including the commission members, when they speak, identify themselves just so Jack can know who we are here to.
Thank you, guys.
Any other comments from the commission on the application we have before us?
I have a question, General. This is Anne Marie Diggle. I'm one of the commission alternates. Is there a time limit as far as how late these lights can be on?
That is. There is not a specified time limit. The, the intention which is in here, it, it says one of the things we're looking for is we're looking for the applicant's desire. How late does he want to have it on? And then, you know, we can go with that. But we're trying to figure out how long are the lights going to be on and that sort of thing. If, if we're going to be out playing soccer at three in the morning, that's a different venture than, I think what they normally do is they stop like eight or nine o'clock. And so, but, but that's what we were looking for. That's what I was looking for in the application. It tells that kind of information.
Thank you.
Any other commission members? Leanne, did you have a question? No. Okay. I'm going to move to public.
Can I?
And, and a couple of other questions right there.
Yeah, and, and cremate. The, the plan with the map, there, it looks like most of the lights are on the side of Riverside Drive. So that way they're aiming away from, is that correct? There's only one that looks like it might be facing the thousands on the other side there of Riverside Drive. So that's, that's a good thing. I like that. And I guess it's too bad that you can't get, the tower is taller so that then the light would be aiming down more and still illuminating the field. But I guess maybe a limitation of reportable light side around.
Pretty well.
Yeah.
Anybody from the public that would like to comment either? And A?
Yes, for the record, Hank Bruner on the Conservation Commission. And one of the considerations that the commission should be aware of is that the town's recreational field sits immediately adjacent to two very important natural resource areas. One of them is it's immediately along the Hop River. And then on the western adjacency is a town, large town parcel that is flood plain with a fair number of natural habitats, including rural pools. One of the concerns of with dark skies or the Connecticut, some of the Connecticut lighting and around conservation is associated with migratory birds. So I, I would agree with the recommendation to follow the dark, you know, some level of shielding. And I don't know whether there are companies that actually make shielding or an inquiry could be made to the vendors or, you know, that you're, that you're using for this to see if there is shielding available that can be used to adapt to the, to the units so that they're down casting the light and not bleeding it into the horizon and shooting up. The second major part though is the timing of the activities around migratory patterns or when frogs have fallen. And the recommendations basically are between August, the migratory seasons, between August 15th and November 15th, that the lights should be shut off. And I'm assuming that this would probably be easy unless there's some pretty late night soccer going on. Between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, there should be no lighting. And then again, the same timeframe, April through May 31st, April 1st through May 31st, no lighting between 11:00 and 6, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. A lot of those birds migrate at night. The rural pools would be addressed pretty much by, because someone with a distance, generally we look at within 750 feet of the pools. These pools are with, I measured it with about 650 feet. But if they were down, if the, if the units were not bleeding that way, which they don't appear to be in the layout that you've had, I don't think it would be an issue for that side of for rural pools and the frogs usually knows. So that's probably a lesser issue, but one to just keep in mind that that is a natural area there. And maintaining, you know, as much downward directed light as possible on that western side especially is, is pretty important.
Any other comments from any members of the public?
And the commission members.
With this application?
So Jay, this is Scott Kassan speaking. I'm on the commission. Anyways, if you allow them that they put shielding and all this, does it still have to meet all those guidelines from the regulations?
Wow, excellent. Yes, I mean, there's, there ought to be some ways that we can work, you know, we can make them as hard as possible or as easy as possible, but we ought to address each of these things here. And I think if you went back and you looked at the lighting plan, I guess the town did have a lighting engineer. I don't know how much that cost to do that. I'm, I'm guessing that we can get the light levels adjacent below that point two boomers thing, you know. But I would like, I would like to see a plan that at least recognizes that we're going to make an attempt to do that, even if we were to go out and get a light meter so that we can measure the light. You know, and a light meter is like 15 or 20 bucks.
You can get it app to your phone.
Okay, yep. So, so it's, it's not hard. I do, yeah. So, so yes, we, as, as we just talked on the last public hearing that you sat through, we can't not comply with the regulations. You know, that we are all sworn to do that when we, when we accept the position is that we're going to uphold the regulations. And that doesn't mean that I don't make one now and then, but I do my very best to try and meet them. And, and I think Eric would tell you that, you know, he's had to do some things that he wasn't really excited about because they were required by the regulations. And, and so we and, and all that is way different than the application we've got in front of us tonight. We shouldn't address any of those things.
I'm saying that, and this is Scott for sign again, but you know, if you go through these, there's a lot of regulatory things that are in these regulations that need to be addressed. The parking lighting is different than the field lighting. You know, there's, there's two pages of regulations. Everybody really should read that.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Branch is right here. One question, is this a site plan application or is it a special permit application?
Special permit.
I was just thinking of time.
It had to be. Is the neighbor to the soccer field on the call tonight? Okay, there's, there's gentlemen. So with that, what I, what I would like to do and look at for each of the commission is we hold the public hearing open and try and.
Can I speak to that before you guys make a motion on that, please? So is that okay? I'm sorry. Is it the right timing for me?
No, that's good.
Okay. So first Anne Marie, you know, to your point, the timing would be as the season gets later and they need to go on earlier, they would go on earlier, but they would be off roughly at 9:15 once the kids are safely back to their cars. The levels of the lights are determined a little bit on the safety of the players. These are temporary lights, not permanent lights. Therefore, we, we asked for a special permit for the length of time that we're looking to add the lights. Our club brings 200 families to the town, right? That also support the local businesses and everything else in that local area. If we move to extend this to the next meeting, then our ability to run our business in your town is not going to be the case. We're going to have to change our lease and we're going to have to move to find a venue that can support the kids' safety in playing soccer in the evenings, 200 plus families. And so I just want to point that out that we asked for a special permit based upon the timing and doing this in the proper order. We didn't, we, we haven't moved the lights there. We can't get the light meter and all of those things until we get the approvals from you guys. So that's why we went forward in the direction that we did.
Record Mark Branch, I think that deserves an answer. If timing is important and if the number of families involved is significant, then you should have come here prepared tonight, ready to address the criteria of the regulations and provide the information that our regulations require. The chairman is being very kind by offering to, to keep this public hearing open. He could just close it tonight and your application would be denied because it is incomplete and not compliant. So try to, try to keep that in mind. Thank you. Sorry.
No, I, I do recognize the advantages of the town and I think that there is a win-win answer out there. Put the energy in to, to get it yet. And I cannot in good conscience ignore what we have in our regulations. And I can't ask any of the other commission members to do that either. I, I'm sorry, but that's just not, as you said, that's not how it can go. So so I will keep public, I do recommend to the commission that we keep the public hearing open. And if, if the soccer club, you know, chooses to go someplace else, I guess that'll have to be that way. I, I hope that that isn't there, but you know, we could have been working on this for the last year. And, and didn't. And, and I know that there's probably lots of blame to go around there. That's not just on you guys, but that's where we are. You, you can't come in and, and ask me to approve an application that doesn't, doesn't meet requirements. So I'm not going to make a motion. I'm just going to go ahead and continue the public hearing for the next meeting. And we'll make a decision at that point. Any questions on that?
So what would the next step be? Would they have to just resubmit or just edit what they already submitted?
They need to come in and tell us, you know, here are the characteristics. They, they need to go in with a plan that addresses our regulations. You know, they need to be able to go through there point by point and address it. And not just say, we just want to put up lights. And, and I know I'm not trying to be insulting or facetious or anything like that, but it, and maybe that's something that the town needs to spend a little money in to, to help it out because it is good for the town. I don't know. But it's not the commission's job to engineer that with public hearing.
But the answer to your question is they don't have to start over. If the hearing was closed and denied, they have to pay a new application fee. They would have to be a new public hearing. But by keeping the hearing open, they're allowed to supplement their submission with an eye toward addressing the regulatory criteria. And, and by the way, some, some of the lighting manufacturers will help you with like with photometric planes.
Okay. So it's 8:04. We will continue this public hearing in our next meeting. Did you have a date on the agenda when that's going to be? Looks like October 15th. Okay. That concludes the public hearings for tonight. It ends 8:05. I will call the regular meeting to order. We'll call CD to alternate. I see all of the regular commission members are here. And I see Anne Marie is here as an alternate. And that is it. additions or changes to the agenda. I would like to add new item under new business 6B solar panel installation at Endover Elementary School. Any other changes to the agenda that anybody has in mind? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to add new item 6B elementary school solar panels to the agenda. Okay. Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Leanne?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 500. First up, a public comment, limited to concerns and issues not on the agenda. That I think you're going to want to talk about something that is on the agenda. I'll let you tell me which one I talked about.
Sure. My name's Barry Kyle. I'm on 425, round six. I wanted to talk about the dancers that are being held right behind my property.
Yep. So that is, that is the new business item, you know, that we will be talking about. And I think, sure. While we won't necessarily give you an opportunity to talk about that tonight, I'm thinking that what we say about it, you'll know when you do have the opportunity to. Okay. But first up is the application of William Jennerbees, 517, round six, special permit for modification to the existing special permit to operate a sand gravel operation. I think, I think it's pretty cut and dry that, that the application does not meet the requirements of the regulations.
The modification was that he didn't want to put any topsoil.
Right. And in spite of the fact that his, his restoration plan has continually said four inches of topsoil, he has repeatedly said he doesn't want to put any topsoil under it. So there was, there was a disconnect between him and himself for the last several years. Any other comments on the restoration plan for the gravel pit? Any questions for the restoration plan for the gravel pit?
Right. The rose modification, the modification of the restoration.
Okay, hearing done.
Yep, Jim? Hi, this is Leanne Hutchinson. Um, with the, last month, the application fee had not been paid. Has it been paid since then?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it, it was about paid right before the meeting last time. It's been paid anyways.
Okay.
So the way I understand that motions go is that we are always encouraged to make the motion in the positive. And if you don't like it, you vote against it as opposed to the negative. And if the negative motion doesn't pass, you don't know where you are. With, with that in mind, I will make a motion to approve the application of the modification to the existing special permit for restoration of the sand and gravel operation. Looking for a second? Ann, thank you. That's a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
This is Patrick Doherty. I'm just new to this special permit and the modification to it. And I, I'm wondering what the actual vote is for. Is that for an exemption of the topsoil requirement or just a modification?
The vote is on the modified restoration plan that he presented that did not have any topsoil in it. The vote is on the modified restoration plan that he presented that did not have any top soil in it. We, we cannot, we cannot grant a waiver for various, you'd have to go to his own board, I just said, the appeals for, for that. Thank you, if you wanted to. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Anne?
Please, please say, or no?
Okay, here it was. Scott? Lee Anne?
Nay.
Patrick, but it stands for now. Okay, I vote nay as well. The motion fails. By a vote of zero, four, in one abstention. Patrick, there it is. Moving on to, uh. The next item is the application to Beale Soccer Club. Given that, uh, we continued the public hearing until the next meeting. I do not intend to take a vote on that application tonight and we will move on to the next item. Next item is modification to parking at, uh, seventeen to twenty-five School Road, Town Hall, Community Center, Harren.
Okay, so all of you may recall that as, uh, one of the things that was required. By the town for the application for the Endover Community Center was a new parking plan. Uh, so the town proposed to the zoning commission. A parking plan for essentially the municipal campus itself, which encompassed the school. The town hall, the new community center and the fire department. Um, and showed that the amount of available parking spots after construction. Was solidly in the middle between the minimum and maximum required parking. Uh, so. What we have there now is perfectly compliant with the zoning regulations. However, one of the things we realized is that we are somewhat short of parking directly in front of the town hall. Um, we're going to make one administrative move. By taking a spot that's now dedicated for a resident trooper. And moving him to around the back of the building, which will free up one more visitor parking spot. We would also like the ability to put in one additional parallel parking spot. In the area where there used to be two slant parking spots. Uh, most of you remember and anytime you go to the town hall, you often see people parking in the old spots. Uh, those spots were eliminated because, uh, it does not even come close to meeting the, the requirements in our zoning regulation. For the aisle width, the zoning regulations require twenty-four foot wide aisle. If you have, uh, perpendicular parking to the aisle. So with that slant parking, it's a lot less than that. Um, in fact, we have. Uh, had several minor bumps, uh, there fairly recently. Um. You know, I've been just because my window looks out at that. So we're not proposing to put that back in. That was taken out with the original parking plan. However. That spot will sustain a single parallel parking spot. And still have well more than the aisle width that the commission's regulations require. So basically what we're looking, the town is looking to add in a single parallel parking spot, uh, in that parking area. I did discuss it with the zoning chair who brought his rather large pickup truck out there. Um, and demonstrated hopefully to his satisfaction that he could park in all the spots and still not run into a car. Uh, handling that was parked there. Uh, because it's just a single spot. My suggestion is that that be handled instead of as a full-blown application for a modification. To the parking plan for the community centers that you handle that as administrative business and allow Jim to make the decision.
Say question?
Sure.
Oh, um, how many handicap spots are required to have? And how many do we have? Are we above or just at the minimum?
So that is a good question. Um, so we are, basically, we are above. The minimum if you take all the spots for the community center and the town hall.
Yes.
Um, maybe by one. There's some question about whether we should convert one of the, one single handicap spot back to a regular spot.
Yeah, I was just thinking that there, there seems to be a lot of handicap spots. And for the community center, you still have quite a distance to go. Get to the community center. I mean, I know there's that one right at the door.
Right.
But then the other ones, you really have to, I mean, it's kind of a far distance. So I didn't know what the advantage of having one handicap spots.
Well, I, I've seen so far for one event for handicap spots being used concurrently. Um, and one free in front of the town hall. So I've seen four of the five available spots in use. Um, at one time for events. So a significant fraction of the seniors that are using the facility, you have handicaps. So for senior center events, um, I think we're pretty close.
I would say sure, we're at the minimum or we're above.
Yeah. Any other questions, Eric?
Jim, do you have anything on, uh?
Any question?
Do you have, Jim?
Jim, how's it? Eric, do you know when those will be striped?
Uh, so that's a good question. We have an inquiry in with the striping company now. And we're hoping to get them out in, within the next month. Uh, we haven't. Uh, the Public Works Forum has not outlined the striping for that spot yet. Pending a decision by the commission, but I would assume within the next month people will have striped that.
But the library doesn't even have the sign, right?
What?
For the resident state trooper, you just need to have the sign.
Yeah.
Is that something we do, like teleports?
Yeah, yeah. We're just going to move the sign, take the resident state trooper sign off and put a visitor sign near. Yep. And what we've been doing is we've tried to make it clear to employees that employee parking is. Behind the town hall so that the people that are coming in and out for short duration, parking in closer lines, which is that some ground blue, but.
That's like.
Any other questions, uh, on this particular issue or comments? Okay, I would like to, I will make a motion that we permit the zoning enforcement officer to override minor. Non-substantial deviations from the approved special permit. And I consider the addition of this one parking spot to be that minor non-substantial deviation from the. Overall site clearing. I'll stop there then. Okay, thank you, Scott. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott? Lee Anne?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes by zero zero.
Thank you.
Next up. Discussion is allowable use of special permits at the property in eleven Bunker Hill Road. Property known as Spitz Family Farm and permitting special events in general. Turn it over to you. Want to talk to us about what you had in mind or?
Um, yeah, basically we have, uh, we'd like to have, um, concerts. Um, weddings, um, well, we do have a haunted, um, haunted house with a haunted trail. Um, just having more events at the facility, um. You know, open up for, if someone wants to graduate. I don't know, you know, some of you have been down there and have seen the facility, but done a lot of work to, uh, to the property and made it, uh, more, um. You know, more friendly and more inviting and, um, stuff like that. Um, concerts, we've had a few, um. And basically, you know, starting seven o'clock and then at ten, we did have a rain out we had once on a Sunday. That went from five to eight, uh, being mindful of neighbors and, um, and obviously, you know. I was, you know, bit, bit, uh, you know, understanding. I don't think we have a towel on inside noise, uh, but I know we don't, obviously that's fine. It is getting up there. So, um. The way, where I put my stage, uh, I built a, a concrete pad and I have it facing. Away from everyone going in towards, toward my building. Um, so again, I try to be, uh, as accountable as possible. But at, at the same token, trying to utilize property in the best we can.
Okay. Um, the stage is already installed.
Well, it's just a concrete pad. So when I say stages, that's where they just play at. It's like a paper, you know.
Yeah, and raised, it's raised up like.
Not even, it's right on the block.
Yeah, just like a patio.
Yeah, it's like basically a patio.
Okay, Jim, do you have any comments, uh?
No, I want to go, go back in time a little bit here. Um, when Ryan first bought the property. There was, I believe I come to the commission and. Kind of shared some of the thoughts that he had, had bounced off me and also when the, um, with the vital factors there. And at that time, it didn't seem to be a lot of concern. And now. When I asked initially put it on the agenda, it was based on a conversation I had with Ryan and then. There appears to be some concerns from, from neighbors or at least one neighbor, um. I think the concern is there's. And, and this, this is not unique to, to Ryan's property by any means, but there's special events that occur. Here and there. Most of them are like one time or, you know, on occasion. And, you know, looking through the regulations. Properties in the, largely in the industrial zone, um, some of it in the flood zone, don't think that's being utilized at all. There's trees, trees are growing there, I think. Um. So it's not, if there's nothing listed in the allowable uses or the special permit uses. Um, it would cover special events. So I thought I would bring it to the commission, just sort of for general feedback. And then this specific concern came up about, um. Concerts, in particular.
So. I'm sure this is the item that Ryan did, um, Ryan did, did give me a ladder.
If he could come, come forward, then Michael picked him up better.
Saying that the concert would be angled away from my property. I'm right behind him. The noise actually goes right through our windows. Like when we're closed, when you have the closed windows, you're not sleeping. It's impossible to sleep. You might be able to stay there. Uh, how do you make a rock concert quiet? I'm not sure. I see in, in your. On your website, I see big speakers and, you know, it's rock and roll. It's, it's, how are you gonna, I don't get it. Um. It's not that I don't like music. Um, it's just that. Believe it's seven times so far and some, there was two times on one weekend. So you're always wondering, am I going to have another weekend? But just rock answers every, yeah, on the weekend. So it is very disturbing. Um, I kind of know, I'll believe mother with me, who is, she canceled it. You know, it's upsetting to her. We don't know when, we don't know when it's going to happen. So when you're saying you're having events, that kind of gives us. The, the jitters because why, why are these events, what are they doing? Is it going to be, is it going to be rock and roll music? Is it going to be a wedding? You know, we're not sure exactly what this is. So it sounds very vague. It sounds very, the, the request you have sounds very vague and it sounds very, uh. Like open to which whatever you want to do. So far, it hasn't been very pleasant, to be honest with you. Um, why do you think? Aiming a way would prevent the music from coming to our house? I don't know. I mean, sound goes right up there. It's just. Aiming a wave is going to work. Maybe sound barriers might work. I don't know, but. Um, you know, I, I did call once and said, this is loud. You say, you said, no, it's not loud. Well, I guess it's, it's a matter of opinion whether something's louder than that. If you're trying to sleep, it's loud. If you're, if you're at a concert, it probably not loud. So.
Um, yeah, I got it. Understand, understand your concern.
Is that very concerning? If there was a limit to these, if there was a number, if there was some kind of schedule, that would be very helpful, but I'm just fearful. We're going to have weekends, every weekend, especially if it becomes, you know, really popular. And, uh, very stressing and also, it also, uh, how do you sell your property? If you're selling a house, um, by the way, there's rock answers every weekend. So in addition to the noise on round six. There's a noise from back there on the weekend. So it's very distressing. So we look forward to, to that piece in by. And I, I really do. You know, don't want to have an issue with neighbors that I really don't want to, you know, I love his dog. It comes, you know, it's great. Yeah, he is a horn, but, but I just, it's just the concert. It's just the noise coming in the house and it's very dis- disturbing. You know, just, just want to. I'm right on round six. I'm on four twenty-five or six. So I am right, these right, um, Mr. Fitch is right behind me. So, and on the side of it, yeah.
He's right, he's right each of the bar that goes across FFF.
And they had, I believe, the Funky Monkey thing. It had music. You know, it was during the day. It was only two times a year and that was fine, but. Every night on the weekend, it's tough. It's really tough.
So. So I think the purpose of tonight was to see if we can. Figure out maybe a way to end. The, uh, when, when I looked through. I think you're primarily in the industrial zone, as you said. So I looked through the business district. For all the things that you had the right to do. And all the things that were. Special permitted in the business district. And I didn't see anything that sounded like an outdoor event venue. So I said, okay, I'm doing, doing that. And the reason I mentioned business is because all the business. Things are incorporated into the industrial. So it starts out, if it's, if you're in the industrial zone, if it's a business. Thing, you can, you can do it, you can same kind of rules in there. I looked through in the industrial, uh. Things as well. And, and certainly. You know, there's no outdoor venue items listed by special permit or, or, uh, by rank. It was interesting. I looked in the flood plain. And that's where it came up, uh. The closest to me is that, uh. You know, one of the things you can do in a flood plain is you can have carnivals and, and, uh, events like that. Of course, I can't find it right this minute.
Probably a little cloud coming in.
Yeah, but, but it does make sense to me that, you know, if, if you were living next. It would be nice to know what the limitations are, just, just like the special permit that we're asking for for lighting. You know, the neighbor wants to know when the lights are going to be on, what's the worst gaze and all that kind of stuff. When Jim brought the issue up a year ago, you know. I had been to an event over your tree farm when you were doing Christmas trees and you had high cocoa and, and stuff like that, very small event, you know. But it's kind of expanded along the way. So we're not a Christmas tree farm anymore. We're turning it into more of an event venue. And I'm not saying we can't change the regulations to improve that. But that would take a little bit of time because we'd have to figure out, you know, what, what are some reasonable limitations? And certainly because even in the flood zones, if we're having a carnival or something, which is a very limited, short time. You know, maybe once or twice a year thing, it would be by special permit so that we can get input from the neighbors by that. And so what I would hope is that you talk to the neighbors ahead of time and you broke all this stuff out and, and have some kind of a thing so that. If we, if we were. And and have some kind of a thing so that if we, if we were to figure out how to to get a special permit application. By changing the regulations, then then we would do that. But I would encourage you to, you know, talk to, talk to your neighbor and say, yep, I understand your concern. Um, I kind of like to grow my business, but but I, I know you're trying to do the right thing and. And the towns, you know, happy to add and grow your business, but we've got to protect the rights of the neighbors. And so there's, there's two steps. Is first, we would have to change the regulation. Like we did with the community center, you know, we didn't have the, uh, we didn't have anything in our regulations that allowed us to build a community center in a residential area. So we added it. We would have to add something. And we need your help, you know, what is that something? But I think it's kind of like an outdoor venue. You know, you're talking weddings, concerts and that kind of thing. And we would put some kind of limitation in there, how many of them there's gonna be. And, uh, and that sort of thing, so that, you know, the neighbor's not saying, oh, God, we can't come in, you know. You agree with when a reasonable number of those is that that you can live with, and the neighbor might tolerate and that sort of thing, so. Those were the two, those are the two steps that I think we, we have to do. And and I would ask you to work closely with your neighbors so that you can, you know, try to get him on your side for what you want to do and. I know if I lived right next door to a rock concert, I wouldn't be real excited about that either, but, uh. But I think there's a lot of good things you can do down there that don't have to make that kind of way to see them. And it's, your, your business has been expanding, which is good. I think it's now, you, it's gone on all of us, but you're no longer at Christmas tree farm and trying to be something else and. And it's, uh, time to address that.
So, yeah, question says, well, the Christmas tree park is an outside venue, so.
Now, Christmas tree park is a park.
Correct, but basically we sell Christmas trees. And people come.
Yep, that's a park, you know, that's like selling vegetables.
So, what was that?
Considered use of right.
Yeah, all right, um, yeah, I'm just concerned, I mean, you're, it's, you're putting restraints on the business, um.
That's right.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of at a loss, and if we don't have regulations. What do you need to do? I, I reached out to my neighbors, I have two neighbors. One that's probably about fifty feet from the stage. He has to say it.
He did.
Um, and he, I did send you guys an email with the readings of the. Uh, decimal, whatever it's called, that I took when the concert was going on. Um, for those that didn't get the email. At exactly the same, on my property. His house is here, the resident's house is here, I'm here on my property, and it was sixty-four decimals. You walk up five more, ten more feet towards routes, uh, route six, it was seventy-two decimal, every single car that went by. All right, with no music, just the crickets and the bugs. Fifty-five.
Excuse me, you're, it's clear that you've never dealt with decimal meters or decimal regulations. That's not how the measurements are done, just so you know.
Okay, well, I mean, welcome you guys to come out and test it. I, I'm just doing that as a, as a. Laying it.
I understand.
You understand what I'm saying, um, and the speaker.
You deduct, you deduct background noise from generated noise in a properly done acoustic study, but let me, Mr. Chairman, I think I can be more helpful here. Um, what we're talking about is, uh, a proposal for event centers filling with a farm. Many towns have regulations on this. I've drafted several myself, I have reviewed several more. What I can do is I'll provide you with a couple of samples that I've seen work. And I'll tell you right in the sort of this kind of two models, these kind of two, two approaches. I know I did one for Scotland, I, I reviewed one for Sherman, I drafted one for, I think, Hartford, so I've done a bunch of these. Um, the two models are, model one is the regulation spells out how often. How, what hours, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so it's sort of fixed. The other model is where you set certain fewer maximums, minimums. But the applicant brings in their, their pro- a specific proposal. So the applicant says, you know, this many events, this many people, these hours, this frequency, these days, days or nights of the week. And then you can approve, modify, approve or deny. Uh, these certain uses, they're called agribusiness. Um, they're not unusual, they're, you, you see this with, um, I represented a winery in, uh, Granby. And, um, uh, actually, it's Granby, it's Granby, and they have this sort of thing, and I drafted that regulation for the, for development, for the, for the farming. So there, there's, there's a bunch of ways to go at this, a lot of towns have those regulations. The key to all those regulations, though, is that you know what you're approving, okay? And I would say to you that until a regulation like that is adopted and an application is filed under that application. That concerts and weddings are not an accessory use to a farm. So if those things are occurring now, they are in violation. So already you do need a regulation, if they keep serving hot chocolate in the tree farm, you know, you may say that's accessory. But, but, but weddings and concerts are not accessory to a farm unless you have a regulation that says so. And like I say, many towns have adopted those kinds of regulations, so I can give you several samples to take a look at. And you can take a look at those samples and see, you can talk to your own attorney. Uh, what experience he, he or she may have in these types of regulations, like I said, they're not unusual, but you just don't have one.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, we, we've talked about putting the venue, uh, you know, in the old quarters or something, so we need one. I was a little surprised how close the house was to, uh.
And if I may about the decimals. Are you taking in the sound with, with the truck, Jake racing down a hill? I mean, if you do that, imagine that for three hours straight. You know, it's a big difference.
Okay, I understand, and so the way it would work is first we'd have to change the regulations. That would require a public hearing, you would get a chance to make your input at that. Then after the regulations are changed, we can put in an application for his business. It's allowed by the regulations, right this minute. We do not have a regulation that allows you to do what you're currently doing.
Yeah, so we have regulations, I'll say.
Can't do it.
Yep, we do, we do have something that says, well, we don't have something that says you can't. It's not on the list of, here's what you can do by right, here's what you can do by special permit. And it's not, there's nothing like what you're doing in either of those sections.
Right issue, right.
Yeah, it is a little bit gray and, and that's why, uh, the best thing would be to work closely with the neighbors and.
I, how does this compare to things like, you know, they have concerts at the lake? They have music at the farmer's market, like, how does that compare? Is it because he's a business? Or like?
I mean, are, are the, are concerts at the lake, are they, I mean, you, you. Yeah, in the residential zones, you do a lot, I know you, you have some stuff for recreational uses and temporary events, I don't, I don't know how they handle those. I don't mean.
I think they'd probably fill in a town permit request and, and we do it. And, and I hadn't looked at it, you know, from.
So they're allowed because it's.
Uh, I'm not saying. Never looked at it, never, never saw it, they asked the question.
I, I had a, I had a thought. Could you somehow get some kind of a, like the man shell shape thing behind the performers, which would then project the sounds. Away more than what they are just sitting there where the sound goes all direction.
It doesn't, it, the, the stage is actually set. We push totally in opposite to his house. Plus, there's a big hill and obvious trees that are buffering all that as well. Um, the stage is designed so that the music is pushing and the speakers are pushing out towards the river, to the hot river. Not towards route six, um. And like I said, where I, where I registered the sound, there was no trees, there was no hill, there was a direct route path. To the stage as opposed to the hill and trees, but I understand, something, you know, gets, you know. It couldn't get annoying, I don't know, really long.
It's very unsettling with this.
You know, and I understand.
Probably staying with all these barriers is saying, certainly.
Sure, the only tool we have tonight would be to tell you how you do it. I have a book for Saturday, so all that you know, Tom is now, I wanted to go.
Well, again, it's like every weekend.
You know, this is the problem with our town is that we, we try to, we try to do little things like this. And it gets shut down at all costs.
But it's a big.
Every, every little business in town.
But this, I would give, this is not good. How many people attend this concert?
Fifty people. And it's not a house. It's not a big event, it's like me, it's like me throwing a party at my house.
Except you don't usually throw a party at your house two or three days a weekend.
But I couldn't.
Actually, no, you probably couldn't, especially if you were charging admission of these free.
There's no admission, there's donations.
There's donation, okay, donation, that courts have, sorry, courts have held that accepting donations is still commercial use. That doesn't, that doesn't cut, judges aren't that stupid.
I mean, this, this is what, this is the problem.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, it's, whatever we try to do, we just shut down on this topic.
I disagree with that, because we have, we have. Staffed by, while you continue to expand, you know, and, and the, the nature of the events you're doing over there. Over the last couple of years, and, you know, it gets to the point where you're not a farm anymore, you're an event venue.
An industrial complex, okay, then apply for an industrial use.
It is, it is industrial use. My farm is industrial use, make a tax that on that one.
So, so in the industrial zone, event centers are permitted use.
What was that?
Event centers are permitted use in the industrial zone.
No, they're not.
No, yeah, you have, have you gotten a cease and desist order from the zoning officer? Okay, so you have not been shut down. The chairman and I are trying to explain to you that there is a way to do what you want to do, that it is done in other towns, that there are regulations that facilitate that. And you're saying, well, then that's shutting down.
What you just said.
I, I say I'm gonna do it, aren't you? Well, because you don't have no permits for it now.
But there is no permit.
That's right.
Well, you can have one, develop it, so you can.
That's why I'm not getting engineer here tonight, I don't know what the, the regulation would say.
And that's why I came.
But that's why we put the list here, that's why we had to add additional building to the residential to even build the, the seniors in. And that was, uh, there was a fair amount of churn about doing that, and. We gotta do, we gotta do this right, we have to be respectful of neighbors, probably well. There's, most of the event venues that I see are pretty big pieces of property. Where they are way far away. Yeah, no, I would say more like fifty neighbors. And I recall, you know, Carter Farm. Bigger place, they've had the complaints from the neighbors about the, the concerts going on there. I don't know how to go look up what the resolution was over there, but I do know.
I think they don't remember the day.
Yeah.
They're like, three, six, or.
Yeah, they, they changed because of the, uh, the neighbors complaining about the, the sound. So, so that's all I got for you tonight, if, if you want to pursue, you know, a change to the regulation to that, uh, we could start working on that. We need, yeah, what, what would you like to actually do?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
Hi, uh, so for the record, John Guskowski, town planner. Um, if it, if it's appropriate, I'd be happy to work with, uh, Mr. Fitch on, on some proposed options. Uh, Town of Columbia, right next door, recently approved, uh, an event venue text amendment to their zoning regulations. Um, as well as they have, um, separate regulations for winery-based events, obviously, this is a tree farm, it's a little bit different, but. Um, but there are, you know, as, as Attorney Brant said, there are different regulatory approaches, but the first step would be to define specifically what. The applicant wants to see happen there and, and shape some regulations around it, again, it would be a proposal. But if it's appropriate, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Mr. Fitch on it.
Okay, um, do you want to see, uh, Attorney Brant's, uh, models that he has or?
Attorney Brant and I can trade examples.
Okay.
We, we've done it before.
Okay. So that's, uh. That was, that was the discussion that, that hopefully describes a way ahead, it, it could work for you. But I think the town dev wants to see.
Progress, Ryan.
See, she just ignore you for like a year and a half, like the guy on route, route six. No, I, I, again, I, I'm for coming to all you, that's why I came to you guys and I said I was coming. Um, you know, I reached out to the neighbors to make sure there was no issue and, uh, you know. We, we, we'll figure it out. Now, I do, we, we kind of, I would like to do a haunted, um, haunted house. Um, trail at the farm, so that would be something that we would like to figure out, there needs to be a permit for that as well.
The, the whole permit process is not tied to the zoning regulation. The zoning regulations don't talk about this permit process, we need, we have regulations that allow you to do something. Now, I think the town likes to know what you're doing so that if there's gonna be a traffic concern or anything like that. They can make arrangements for it, but, but that's, uh, that doesn't tie into our zoning regulations. Allowing you to do those kind of things. And the only way our regulations get better is when we find a hole in them, we go out and fix. It's heavy there. Okay, um. I mean, move on to new item six B, solar panels at the school. Celeste, do you want to say anything about that?
Yes, um, hold on, let me just, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I'm clear.
All right, oh, all right, here I am, hi, thank you, um. So this is, um, this is an initiative by the board, um. Uh, um, we, this was brought before us by a former, uh, board of, uh, board of ed. Uh, member Steve Fuss, who, uh, has since resigned from the board. Um, but we've been, uh, trying to get this, um, application approved through, um. We've been working with Titan Energy and we were in a lottery to get some assistance and after, uh, several. Uh, tries, we were finally, uh, selected, um, so, you know, we'd like to proceed with this. Um, it would be definitely cost-saving for, uh, the school, which in turn would be cost-saving for the town. Um, it's, um, in front of you, um, what I had sent to you, um, this, uh, to, to you. Jed was the, um, power service agreement, um, basically it would. Basically be no cost to the school and, and no cost to the town to, to install these, uh, solar panels. Um, so, um, I think in front of you, you also have the, um. Picture of where the, the panels would be placed, um, and according kind of to our.
Well, just a minute, Celeste, and let me ask the commission members if they have seen this, because I can't remember. If I sent it out, you know, it was so late breaking that we decided to tie it in agenda, that I did. But I do think John is able to share his screen and maybe call up the picture that has preliminary layout on it. From that document I sent you via email today, and I apologize for not sending it out to the rest of the commission. With, with all the, uh, there was, there were a lot of moving parts trying to get ready for tonight.
No, I, I, I understand, you have a lot on your agenda.
So John, can you, uh, share and, uh, do that and, we, we need to let him do that, or John, you can.
This is the amendment document.
Yep, it was, uh.
Yes, that's what it's.
Can you see my screen?
Uh, don't see anything in it yet, we do see your screen, but it's black.
Okay, all right, I had this problem last night, um.
Okay, yeah, oh, there we go, you got it, John.
Yep, that's it.
All right, so Celeste, you tell me where to go.
So if you just, just, if you just scroll up, John, keep going, um, keep, keep going. Keep going, right there, right there, so that's the satellite picture of the property, the, the first picture, so that's how it looks now. And then this is the preliminary layout, so you can see they're, they're looking to put the panels. So you can see they're they're looking to put the panels. Basically, kind of. Over where um like the the middle of the school is, i- if you're looking like to the left, that that would be the the gym. Yep, so that middle part right there where it starts, that's kind of the middle of the school. And then it would come over, yep, and then come over to the school and then that bigger part where you kind of have your your cursor. Yep, right there. Thank you, is the the cafeteria. Yep. And then um and then the kind of the upper part, the 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 kind of the back part of the school up there. So they're they're flat panels, um, and again, with the help of uh Superintendent Bruno, who's. Here with us this evening, um, and kind of her research on this, it would appear that we we would be within the the zoning regs. Um, and um. You know, we'd like to move on this. There is a timeframe to it. Titan Energy is looking to get, you know, autographs on on this, um, so I appreciate. Uh, Mr. Larson putting this on so early um to kind of help us out with that.
These are all those money?
Yes, so you know, it'd be essentially plus with the the top of the room.
I was just looking in the reg.
The uh only thing I can see in in the reg that's uh specific is can't exceed thirty five feet. And uh. And and these wouldn't, the uh the high point there, you're right at the uh left hand side of the picture. Doesn't have solar panel on it and that might be a little problematic, but where they've got the solar panels is all. Least to my eye, well under thirty five.
Correct.
So I know the town supports uh solar panels. I think it's a good idea. There might be some. You know, bugs out there. I know you sent a letter to the board at Selectment asking for some feedback on it, but um. And uh. You know, as we mentioned, might need a building permit or or something like that. I don't know, but uh. As far as complying with our regulations, I didn't see any choke stoppers out there home.
Looks like it's permitted as of right. I'm just looking at.
Yeah.
Four point twenty point three N.
Uh, Mr. Attorney Branson, I'm sorry, could you just repeat that one more time?
I said, I I just took a look at the regulation. It seems to be permitted as of right in all zones.
Okay, so so does that mean that we would not need a a permit?
No, you you would need a zoning permit, Jim House. You need a zoning permit, a building permit, and probably an electrical permit.
But you wouldn't need.
We need to come to commission.
Okay, so okay, so just. Okay. Okay, um. Okay, so then I guess just what's the for forgive me, what what's the next step? So do I get your blessing on this and then uh then we go from there? I don't know. Valerie, you want to take over?
No, I just wanted to, Jim, I just wanted to let you know, um, and I did write down for us to to look at, but. But we have the single phase electrical and the plan is to continue with the single phase electrical, so. Um, would we require a permit if we're not changing our electrical?
Yes, you would. I I'm not the building official, but I'm I'm certain that the building official would would answer that question in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
But anyhow, that was a picture I seemed to say, Joe, and I I thought it looked like it's going to work as far as from zoning and uh. Any of the commissioners, managers have any questions for either suppose for Valerie at this point?
And and I apologize, I I didn't have my pen handy when you said, so we would need a building and electrical and what was the other permit? Zoning permit?
Yeah, so you definitely need material sheets from the. Whoever makes the product and you should be able to work with the vendor and get whatever.
It's confusing terminology. I know I get confused on difference between zoning permit and zoning applications. Uh, so it doesn't surprise me that that term.
But you'd be working with a contractor.
Cool, okay, right, right, and they would probably get all of these. Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, so these are fairly complex applications for a fairly large commercial solar, so your. Titan Energy will handle all that. Once you have the contract documents signed, then. You turn that all over them. They're responsible for filing all the paperwork. They're going to need basically permits from zoning. They're going to need permits for the building official. And it will also require regulatory approval by the utility company. Um, that will likely be biggest delay. The town could probably approve that fairly quickly. You might wait a couple of months before the utility company will sign off on that, um, but that that's town change.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for hanging in there.
Sorry, I was a bit scattered. I was trying to put my daughter to bed and I knew the moment you would say we were up. Was right when I was trying to put her to bed, so I apologize if I seemed a little um scattered, so um, thank you. Thank you again for putting it on the agenda. I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, good night.
Thanks.
Next item up is the approval of the minutes public hearing. Held August twentieth and regular meeting held August twentieth. Now making motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Anybody have any comments? Okay, hearing none. Call for vote, Ian. Scott? Lee?
Hello?
Yep. Say aye.
Hi, yes, I I thought I was unmuted. I had a couple of um small changes before we vote.
Oh. Okay, um, it means I have to find events and never hear my files at Scott. Go ahead, Leanne.
Um, the public hearing, um, not Catherine Hutchinson was present at the public hearing. But not also at the regular meeting.
Okay, so your thought was we needed to include her in a department somewhere? Like for public present, right up there at the top?
Yes, for the public hearing.
Okay, got it.
And I think under the regular meeting minutes under five C, um, it's just a slight misspelling. I think it's meant to say um applicant who. Um, it's five C applicant. It says application who was appointed. I think it's meant to say applicant who was appointed. Will be up for reelection, et cetera.
Yeah, it should be. Had a period there.
Oh, so it was it was today submission received from Patrick Darity, Don Denly, and Andreas Hallis period.
Yeah.
Application applicant who is appoint applicant who is appointed will be up for reelection November twenty twenty five. Okay, very good. Anything else, Leanne?
Um, yeah, it's just, um, there's no time given for the end of the meeting. Probably not a big deal, but we usually say adjourned at such and such a time.
Do you know when it was?
Yeah, there's generally no time set at the motion.
Yeah.
I think only normally I'll calculate it, but I think because there was an executive session, I couldn't figure out what time it was.
Too late.
And then I just have a question if we're done with that, the the time, I don't remember what time it was. Um, under eleven C, town planner. Where it says nothing further, Scott Person reviewed meeting with builder and Eric Anderson regarding Bunker Hill Road. My recollection was that Scott, Eric, my recollection is that Eric had mentioned. A property on Bunker Hill Road at some point in the meeting without naming it. And then later on, Scott asked where that was. So I'm, I just don't think there was a. Scott, I don't think there was a review of a meeting with a builder, was there?
Help me, Leanne, I'm having a hard time finding uh in the minutes where you're talking about. Oh, okay.
I think asked about the meeting that Eric had with the builder.
Really, the meeting with Jim had builder. I just stuck my nose in there because I saw Chad and somebody interesting. So. Does that need to be in there?
Which property it was, and I'm just, I this just to me reads like. There was a meeting which Eric may have met with somebody. I think he did end up naming the property. I just read this as saying. That Scott reviewed something for us and I think Scott had questioned where the property actually was, that's all. Just a distinction.
The speech property up under Hill Road, it was going to be uh, somebody was looking at by us. And Jim had talked about the fact that uh there was a lot of his time that went into. Um, work with the guy and possibilities there.
Okay.
And so. So all I did was ask.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we we eliminate that whole sentence.
I mean, if Eric has anything to add later on tonight, it would be interesting if this talk went anywhere. I'm just making a distinction now about. Um, you know, how much was actually discussed last month. That was that was all I had.
Okay. So I will revise my motion. To be make a motion to approve the minutes. As amended to reflect the fact that Catherine Hutchinson was there for the public hearing. Under paragraph five two C. It says submission received from Patrick Darity, Don Denly, and Andreas Hallis, period. Applicant who is appointed will be up for reelection November twenty twenty five. And then we will eliminate the. Sentence Scott Person reviewed meeting with builder and Eric Anderson regarding Bunker Hill Road. And as far as putting the time in that we adjourned. My mistake. And uh probably not, we're going back into uh reviewing the the thing to uh fix it. So three.
No, probably not.
Four corrections here. Okay, so that's amended. Any other discussion? A call for vote, Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to accept the minutes as amended as of five twenty two. Next up is correspondence and administrative reports. Jim?
No correspondence, administrative reports. Um, I have a few ongoing enforcement actions. Um, still working with gentleman in Pine Ridge Drive. Kind of resolve that matter, but I did issue a cease and desist to. By the Lake Road, the owner of five eighty Lake Road, uh, the business being Benjamin Franklin for doing really site work without. Permission without a revised site plan. And it just went out. Um, I'm also kind of dealing with proliferation of of road signs, which. I believe I'm I'm going to have to go up with a way to handle those. We tend to be.
I noticed that lately too.
So I I hope to have a solution for that problem. Okay, I I have something in mind. I was actually going to share with Eric.
I grew the signs to be in political advertising signs.
No, it's 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 not, I know, not not in front of, like at the end of Lake Road, there's there's um. Four or five signs. Um, that'd be off off premise signs. They're not related to that town general.
Like people advertising for flower washing and.
Yes.
So on Irdoney Road and Lake Road, there's on the utility pole. House washing.
That's another issue. I don't know what story I have on that. And I know it's.
Our regulations say you don't put them on a utility pole.
So rip them off.
That's pretty much, except that. I don't want to do, you know, not tie it a ladder on Route Six.
Another Z E O that that we represent. Took a pry bar. And and duct taped it to like a boomstick, something, so we can just reach up there.
Well, I didn't see the seat out, you know, not too long ago, gathered upside. They just got their little vehicle.
It was terrible.
I did, yeah, I did um have a conversation with uh the public courts director who said he would be happy to hold these signs if if I want to. If I notify the folks and tell them the signs at public courts department.
Does he have to do that?
No. Some of these signs. Some of these signs are cheap. They're they're probably, some of them are not, you know, some of them are.
I mean, if they're, if the, I I checked with uh with one of the Kerm attorney's, the the uh town municipal municipal insurance folks. And they said if there are these cardboard things that have min- minimal values, throw them out. If it's like an ASO, a plasma sign, maybe it costs fifty or hundred bucks, then you should probably.
Yeah.
Say it's a, you know, it's I have it and it's available. With the little paper ones or or cardboard ones, if you want to, just chuck it. I do.
Any signs on the highway, they're gone very quickly. They're on her, their property, they're gone. The mower was up at Telford Falls.
No, the problems with the state mowers, there's things, so they've got us to get off the mower for each one of them and go get it and get it out of this way. One's in the pulls, I'm out. What does it?
We remove them before we mow them. If you get one of those things wrapped around our boom flail mower, it's quite a bit of work to uh. To extract the metal. They're pretty careful about that because they have to be. Any help, Jim?
No.
John?
Um, I don't, well, I would just want to recap uh the fact that we had uh last Thursday evening. Um, uh, a public information session on the plan of conservation and development that a number of the commissioners attended, and I appreciate that. I I thought it went. Quite well. Um, and I think it's it is a good point uh to sort of kick off the discussions for. Our next phase of writing the plan. Um, and I can work with with you, Mr. Chair, and and Eric on uh sort of scheduling. I would say listening sessions at upcoming planning and zoning meetings based on um the six topical areas that we've identified. I think we could probably start with. I would think um housing, complete streets, or conservation. Uh. And if Hank is still there, Hank expressed interest in in having uh Conservation Commission come and and speak with planning and zoning about their goals. Um, so I would suggest we invite one of these groups to the next uh to the next planning and zoning meeting.
Hank is not here, but I'm sure he is well along the path of uh having his chapter ready to go. So, yeah, oh yeah, I think we start with big streets.
Okay, so Eric, we can work on, can work on uh that discussion for next time.
You got that in pretty good shape. That's right. Um, and I actually have something for the uh liaison with Illinois Wetland. It's uh, you know. Joe reported that that he is satisfied with the changes over on seventy Pine Ridge Drive, but. Where they got the stuff out of the neighbors, the fill out of the neighbors' property over there redirected runoff and. And he considers that matter close. So that's that. Mission discussion or miscellaneous. Any? Anything else we need to be talking about for me?
Yeah, Patrick.
Um, I've recently been asked to rejoin the economic economic development commission. And I was double checking to see if I should swear in at the town hall or. Because previously I was appointed as a member and I had taken time off due to work. Now I've been asked to rejoin. Is that necessary to swear back into that?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do that. We have a special meeting tomorrow. And then the other question is, should I reach out to? And then the other question is, should I reach out to Mr. Fitch? Or any other assistance? Or is he well set with working with the planning and zoning?
I think John has got to reach out to him as well, let him work on that a little bit to, to see where we can. There's good levels for.
Right.
Then out there.
Meaning is, is a task for the economic development.
Correct, right. That will be aside from planning and zoning. But I wanted to check with you and see if there's any conflicts of interest or.
If you get information from a future applicant, it, it could, it could disqualify you from voting on an application.
Fair enough.
So, safer, safer amount to this.
Okay, and if he comes to the Economic Development Commission, same thing?
You can, you can listen. Just, you don't want to say anything that may be determinative determination.
Correct, okay.
Of future, of future.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Sure.
And Attorney Branson, in terms of, since you're considering changing the regulations in the industrial zone, potentially allow other uses like venues, would you want the Economic Development Commission to weigh in on that? Is that something where obviously you have the final, the zoning commission has the authority to make the regulations, but that might be something, that might be a role for the EDC to at least opine about?
Okay, no, that, that's a good idea. They certainly always got the ability to, with the public hearing that we're going to have, the associate of an agency. Mind if we're really on to what we're working on? I guess that's probably, okay, do we get an application, then we're allowed to talk about it until we get the public hearing? Any other discussion topics?
One, just sort of by way of, introduction's the wrong word. Those of you who have been around for a few decades know that I'm very protective of my clients, okay? I am happy to work with anyone on developing a regulation or concept. I always have samples of, but I'm not going to sit here when someone accuses you of being anti-business when you're not. And when he just builds a stage with no permits and starts concert with no permits, I think he knew better. So, that, that was, that's why I reacted. I'm not going to let somebody attack you without responding. It's just the way I.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other public comments? And I guess Catherine, you're the only one, only one remaining from the public.
Yes, thank you very much. I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you for hanging in there. Next.
You're welcome.
Next meeting date, venue, October fifteenth, location to be determined. I think we will be back to Zoom only. Just, what, what do people think about this year? You know, it came over and worked. That was, that was a win. Not opposed to that.
I find it so much easier to be able to share with people and talk with people.
It is, it is nice to get together and talk a little bit while the weather's okay. I'm not opposed to that. But again, you know, if anybody wants to shoot me an email with what your preferences are, if you don't want to talk about it here, I'm interested in that. You know, Zoom's been working pretty easy. If we can make this easy too. My goal is eventually to get into the community senior center, but we're not, not quite there yet. So, we'll let you know where we're going to be. And then we might change it at the very last minute.
Yeah, there's no internet, we don't. How do we handle the closing of the building?
Closing this building? If we get out by nine thirty, that's when the janitor leaves.
I know that's.
Otherwise, we'll be, we'll be wedged out of the door and locked shut. So.
Mr. Chair, this is Catherine Hutchinson again, if I may. I would appreciate it, and I'm sure many of us do would, that if for the time being, they could at least remain hybrid. COVID is still a threat to those of us who are in the category that we really have to worry if we get it. My situation, of course, being a very senior person. So, it's just very nice to have, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate without having to actually come to the physical meeting.
And I think, you know, it would either be a hybrid or a Zoom only because of that very reason. And I know John's got a long commute to get here and, you know, there's, there's other people that might come in to provide assistance. And, and it's just their efficient use of time. It, it's too, too easy to do. But I do like talking to all you folks in person, too. That's kind of nice as well.
Well, it would be nice to be there in person, but sometimes we have to make health choices. So, I really appreciate being able to do it remotely. Again, thank you.
So, my last comment is, you're one. Like John said, I, I appreciate as many people from planning and zoning showing up at our information session. It was a, was a nice crowd, but primarily thanks to planning and zoning commission and the conservation commission. I guess we had all of the Economic Development Commission there as well. So, they were perfect attendance, too. Well, thank Eric for working to get the, get the building ready. It was a little touch and go last Thursday. I'd rather not be able to do it there. And I want to thank Ian for, you know, setting up here tonight and helping us out and the, the school let us do that. And I appreciate all of you guys staying engaged in, you know, there's, there's actually a lot of sort of media issues going on right this minute. And I need, need the input from all of you, so.
And next month, if we want to use this building again, we can be back in the library, which is left echoing.
Yep.
But we had the book fair set up.
How big are the chairs?
They're like these. They're more comfortable in fact, they're pushing.
So, I make a motion to adjourn at nine eighteen. Looking for a second, second. Okay, thank you, Patrick. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion that is aye to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.